All right, City Manager, how are you today?
I'm fine, and you?
Doing well, doing well.
Good, I hope you all are. Would you like an invocation, Mr. Mayor?
Please. Rachel, you want to lead us?
I thought Ms. Wilson.
I'm going to depart of you today.
Thank you very much. Oh, Lord, for this day and for all that you've done for us. For all of the special and many needs in our area and in our community. We simply ask that you would touch us, sensitize us to the various issues, the conversation around this table and in this room. We pray that thou would give us open ears and receptive hearts. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Dow.
If the ushers come forward, please.
Mr. Mayor, we will open our City Council discussion with an Affordable Housing Initiative presentation by Ms. Gloria Said, Community Development Director. And I will say that all of our development departments who report to Assistant City Manager Gentry have had a part in this presentation. I think Gloria probably has had a big, biggest part, or Krista and everyone else. She's doing the honors, but all of them have worked as a team to come up with some of the recommendations that we'll make. And I'm very glad to say, while I have the opportunity, I see so many of our banking partners in the room. That's going to be key to any of the recommendations being implemented. I really want to say thank you from me for their willingness to listen. Gloria? Or Krista? So, see, I told you Krista helped in our Planning and Development Services Director.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I have a small speaking part this afternoon. I have the pleasure of teeing this up for the star of the show, my fabulous colleague here, Ms. Gloria Said. But what I want to get to talk to you about is the alignment within Envision Columbia. While it could be argued that affordable workforce housing, safe decent housing for everybody, underpins all of your goals and focus areas, there's just a couple we want to make sure you're aware of. First of all, empowering our residents. Remember, it says, "Our citizens live in a safe, sustainable neighborhood where children are thriving, learning, and having fun, financially and physically healthy, and lead peaceful and productive lives." Enhancing Columbia's neighborhoods, obviously, if we have a diverse supply of affordable workforce and a variety of housing choices, that helps support that focus area. And two goals to be, to remind yourself of is connecting the city's neighborhoods and business districts through cohesive land use, infrastructure development, and transportation planning. We're going to be looking at housing a lot in our upcoming comprehensive plan. And goal number three, fostering a healthy quality of life focusing on safety, culture, and recreation. So, what we're talking about here ties right into everything you've been working on for the past year. Turn it over to Gloria.
Thank you, Krista. Good afternoon, Mayor Benjamin, members of City Council, Ms. Wilson. It's my pleasure today to present to you our Envision Housing presentation as it relates to the needs that we are currently seeing around Columbia. As you know, we are in the process of, or in the middle of, our two-year plan that was put forth by Ms. Wilson. So, we're going to talk a little bit about, you know, what we've done in the past, what we've done very well, where we are now, and then we'll present some things for discussion toward the end of the presentation. So, as you all know, the City of Columbia is a participating jurisdiction. It's a PJ, and we do receive entitlement dollars on an annual basis from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And HUD mandates that we prepare a five-year consolidated plan. And in this plan, it helps us to recognize and understand what the community needs are. Helps us to see what they're interested in, how to set priorities and objectives as we move forward, and make plans to spend those dollars. And more, most importantly, with those federal dollars, we are asked to assist those who are low to moderate income individuals. So, a lot of the planning that we do is centered around that. So, just to give you a little bit of information, between 2000 and 2013, the median home prices increased by 69 percent, and rents have increased by 49 percent. And our consolidated plan also said that 3,860 homeowners and 11,069 renters are paying more than 30 percent of their income toward housing cost. And before coming in today, I called my friend, Ms. Nancy Stottermeyer, with the Columbia Housing Authority, just to get some more updated statistics about how we look in terms of housing affordability in the Columbia area. And I do want to share a little bit of that information with you that's not on the slides. So, CHA has said that in July of 2016, their Section Eight program that was closed for three years was reopened, and they accepted 23,266 applications in 27 hours.
Twenty-seven hours?
In 27 hours, yes. And of those, they randomly selected 3,000 of them for assistance. In addition, as of January 1st, 2018, just a few weeks ago, there are still 2,500 applicants on that Section Eight waitlist. In May of 2016, the Columbia Housing Authority opened up its Housing Choice voucher project-based program, and there are still 8,500 people on that waiting list. So, the public housing waitlist opened in August of 2017, so these are three different programs. And as of December 31st last year, there were 10,000 applicants on that waitlist. So, needless to say, needless to say, the affordable housing situation hadn't gotten any better, it's actually gotten worse. So, I think that's really important to point out.
So, Gloria, I was trying to write this down, but just so we know total, so, Section Eight waitlist currently has 20,000?
2,500.
Twenty, oh, 2,500.
Correct.
Section Eight.
Section Eight, correct. And then, the public housing is 10,000?
Yes.
Section Eight, 2,500.
Section Eight, 2,500.
2,500. And the Housing Choice voucher has 8,500.
Eighty-five.
And the public housing, housing has 10,000. So, that's probably about, do the math, about 20,000 people who still need housing currently.
Could somebody be on all three lists?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
When the Housing Authority opens up that list, it gets increase from all around the country as well, just not just limited to local.
Right, that's a good point. Yeah, yeah. That's a good point, because I was, you say it's not local?
Not, not all, but that waitlist may very well be. But, but those, those large numbers come from all across the country.
So, they hear that we have an opening, and they send the application to Columbia Housing, or they might live in Calumazoo.
It's an online process. But, 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 even that being said, those numbers, they're all basically high numbers. But, but, but that, that number always shocks the conscience.
It does. But typically, our vouchers, whatever CHA has to utilize, they focus on the local area first.
Correct.
So, the 10, all right, let me ask you this. Let me just read. The 10,000, the 10,000 number that sort of delineates public housing, that's nationwide?
No, that's local.
Local, Columbia Housing Authority.
Statistics.
One of the programs that they have.
Those are for like your Allen Bendard Court. It's for like Oak Reed and Marion Street High Rise.
Okay, all right, all right.
Those types of project-based properties. So, what is affordable housing? A lot of people throw that term, throws that term around pretty loosely, but I guess it depends on what position or what the topic is at the time of the conversation. Because affordable housing, to you, Mayor Benjamin, may mean something different to me. It's based on whatever you're paying. If you're able to pay it, then it's affordable to you. But for the purposes of this conversation, we're going to use the US government's definition of affordable housing. And it's basically those who pay 30, 30 percent or less, and I'm paraphrasing, for their housing expense, if they're paying 30 percent or less, then they are paying housing costs that are affordable. However, if they're paying more than 30 percent, they're considered cost burdened. And for an example, if you're making $2,000 a month, and you're paying more than $600 for rent or for mortgage, then you're considered cost burdened and so forth. So, I just wanted to make sure that we talked about that particular definition. So, who needs affordable housing? Some of the professions that can benefit from affordable housing includes police officers, firefighters, schoolteachers, nurses, disabled persons, administrative workers, and hospitality workers. And that's just some of the professions. Many of them who are government employees, who actually work for municipalities such as the City of Columbia. And so, we know that there's a huge need for affordable housing. And, but then there's a stigma that goes along with it, as though, you know, if you have a need for affordable housing, you're in some type of category where, you know, it may not be acceptable for you, or for people to accept you in terms of living in their neighborhoods. So... Most of the people in these professions as well generally earn between $32,000 to $55,000 a year. So, improving quality of life. Want to talk a little bit about how we're currently using or viewing the federal funding and other funding to help with improving the quality of life. And that means providing housing for everybody. So, in terms of the federal dollars, those dollars are meant to assist people who are 80 percent or below the area median income. And that's what we currently do, and I think we do a very good job at that, which you'll see as we get further along in the slides in terms of how we're spending those dollars. But we also have people who have the need for housing that exceed 80 percent. So, what do we do with them? Those are the folk that we say we need to provide workforce housing for them. They make over 80 percent of the area AMI, but they also have needs for housing and are interested in the same quality, affordable, safe, sanitary housing that anyone else would want. Also, we utilize general fund dollars to produce housing for individuals with incomes that exceed 120 percent of the AMI. And I think this is really important, because as we are moving forward with the Envision Columbia over the next 20 years, we want to make sure that we have a very diverse community. And in order to do that, we need to be able to serve all the various income brackets that we're discussing.
And I should know this, because my husband tells me that all the time, but I can't remember. What is, what's the standard that your housing shouldn't exceed what percentage of your income?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty percent. So, here are our income limits. This is, this is the chart that we use. HUD issues this out, issues this, issues this chart on an annual basis. Usually, it comes out somewhere around April, and it's the Metropolitan Statistical Area Income for Richland County. And this is what we use. And I've highlighted the 80 percent line item just so that you can see what those incomes are. For a one-person household, they can make $37,550 or less and qualify for the majority of the housing programs that we offer. However, there are still people who make 50 percent and 30 percent of the AMI that need housing. We can talk a little bit about what sources are available out there to help serve that population as well. And further, as I mentioned, the workforce housing, those people would be at 81 percent, up to 119 percent, and I'm just sort of breaking it down for you. That's the definition. Usually, workforce housing is those individuals who earn 81 percent up to 120 percent of the AMI. So, so you've got two categories that, so far, those below 80, and those from 80 up to 120.
Gloria, the one, two, three, off the top, is that income earners or number per household?
Uh, that's number per household.
Just number of people?
Per household, correct. So, if you have a one-person household, they can make $37,550 or less and qualify for the majority of our housing programs that we offer. But the good thing about it, because of our general fund dollars, of course, we, we can assist the workforce housing, not as much as we would like, but we also can help those of the higher income. That's one of the benefits that the city employees get to enjoy through our general fund dollars, that they have access to those funds as well, so that they can reside in the city limits of Columbia. So, I think we do a very good job in trying to diversify the funds that we do have. We just need more of it. So, in, in your packets, you have a list that looks like this, and it can give you a breakdown if you care to, to look at it at your leisure. You're showing on this chart what monies we have spent over the past five years toward, with CDBG home and general fund dollars. We've shown what we've spent, and they were also showing what we leveraged. And as you can see, over the five-year period between 2012 and 2016, we spent over, we spent $7 million, and based on that, we were able to leverage 14.3 million. So, that was through a lot of great planning and efforts that we were able to leverage the dollars to that extent. Now, we took information from that prior list and disaggregated those programs or projects that were related to our housing loan. So, you can see that with our CDBG funding source, over the past five years, we have made 40 loans totaling $1.4 million. That's the City Lender One, Affordable Housing Loan, the MAP Loan, employee loans, and also, we provided a program that we no longer offer today for GAP for Purchase Rehab. Maybe that's something we can talk about later as well. Yes, sir.
I was just asking, what, why, why are we no longer participating in?
With the GAP Purchase Rehab? From my understanding, that was a program that was designed and in partnership with the Federal Home Loan Bank several years ago, and then, once the funds were all allocated, you know, we just didn't do the program again. But these programs are very popular.
No, we did include, Gloria, the, excuse me, we did include the MAP program at one point, a year or two ago. That was, the program sort of fizzled out?
We still, we still offer the MAP program.
Good, yes, yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we still fund that, yes.
All right.
So, with our home dollars, we've done 37 loans and funded the City Lender One and Affordable Housing Loans, and spent 2.7 million. And with General Fund Dollars, as you can see, that's the program that we've done the most loans in, and there's probably a reason for that. We've done 98 and spent 2.8 million. So theoretically, you would think that usually if there's someone in the higher income bracket where they're using the, the general fund dollars for your City Lender Two or employee loans, that their incomes are higher and probably in a better position to, you know, pay their bills on time and don't have as many distractions that could affect, you know, how they decide to prioritize their needs in terms of family and things that might come up suddenly.
The City Lender Two mean we in the second position on the loan, the bank first position, we're second position, that would two mean?
No, sir, it's actually based on income. So, if they make over 80 percent, that chart we, we showed you earlier, then they'll qualify for a City Lender Two loan.
Typically, typically, Gloria, our banking partners are in first position.
Correct. Now, with the Affordable Housing Loan, we do 100 percent of that with a small down, a small down payment of $500. So, future funding, this is where we are now. As you know, Council, you all, approved a two-year funding plan for our CDBG entitlement dollars, and you asked that we prioritize those dollars in four targeted areas of the city. And we've done that, and in this current year, we have allocated $706,000 for acquisition, demolition, and relocation to our development corporations. The facade, we allocated $140,734. And also, there's an infrastructure improvement project that we funded for $110,750. The acquisition, demolition, and relocation is occurring in the Booker Washington Heights and King Lion communities. And the facade is along the Farrell Road Beltline Business Corridor, and the infrastructure improvement is in the Edisto Heights community. So, total of $957,000 that we've allocated in CDBG dollars for this current fiscal year, which is part of our two-year plan. So, we're, we're on target. We want to stay on target. Here, and I'm just going to run through these really quickly, these are some of the maps for our prioritized targeted areas. Of course, I mentioned Booker Washington Heights, the Eau Claire Farrell Road Business Corridor, the Edisto Court Neighborhood, those are the boundaries for that area, and the King Lion. So...
What are the, could you go back to the Booker Washington area, please? What are the, what are the bound, I can't see the boundary as well. It goes...
So, that's Farrell, that's Farrell.
Now, that's, now, that's really blowing it up. Go back to Booker Washington.
Swipe it.
You gotta click it, swipe it. Back it up. Thank you. I'm trying to look and see what that is.
If we started on, there you go. Give me the boundaries, Gloria.
So, I know it's along Farrell Road.
Yeah.
And Beltline Boulevard.
Yeah.
And 277.
Beltline, Farrell Road, 277.
And we can have larger map.
Yeah.
That will hit. Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Didn't prepare for that question. Okay, just briefly, we wanted to highlight some of the projects that we've successfully completed in the past. Of course, you all may remember Harvard Hill, that groundbreaking took place in 2005, where there were some apartments there, some were burned out, they were just in deplorable condition, and those were razed, and TN Development Corporation came back with 30-town homes. And there's layered funding, private dollars, and also home dollars, and struck that property. In addition, Waters Crest Apartments, that groundbreaking took place in recent years, and there, there are eight units there, and people seem to like that because of the density. I guess...
I, I like that.
Yes.
That, I think, would be another version of infill housing. You can go in and it's, it's a hot, it's, it's good, there's a good chance it blends low maintenance overall and that sort of thing.
It works better when they're smaller units, spread around than there has been where we, we try to do these large projects.
And I think a lot of that's going to depend on where it is.
Yeah.
If it's in the, in a neighborhood setting, as opposed to a large business corridor area where you could probably do a higher density. And then, we also included Patterson Road Apartments. So, as you can see, we have a wide variety of styles and number of units that have been produced over the years. This is Burton Heights. You all may be familiar with this neighborhood as well, off of Farrell Road, and there were 26 homes built there. You can see what that average square footage was on those houses. Also, these houses were recently, in recent years, completed, and these are in the Lion Street community. Anyway, I thought I had some notes on that. But to add to, to this, I do know that the Columbia Housing Development Corporation, over the last 15 years, added, I would say, probably about 12 houses in this, in this neighborhood. And they had acquired some lots, which were later sold to the Housing Authority, and the Housing Authority has constructed on those lots. So, you're looking at about 20 new houses that has, that has begun to reshape this neighborhood. And there's more to come, because you know that the Gonzalez Gardens Apartments have been demolished recently too. And that funding that was used was money that was received by the City of Columbia through Community Development, NIP funds. So, just, goes to show a little bit of how you have to access various dollars out there to help achieve whatever it is that you're doing towards revitalizing neighborhoods. So, some of the proposed projects that are currently on the table, and if you all have questions, the executive directors for the development corporations can certainly add to what is not here that you may be interested in knowing. But you know, there's the Pinehurst Project, which is off Pinehurst and Forest Drive, right across from Pinehurst Park, and there are 52 senior units that are proposed for that property that's current, currently under, in, in planning, I'll put it to you that way. It will be an $8 million investment, and there's a $1.2 million gap. Other proposed projects include the South Edisto Neighborhood, and it's a $3.5 million investment with $842,000 gap. And the, the GAP funding sources that are currently under consideration are home investment partnership dollars through the City of Columbia and Richland County. And also, as we mentioned earlier, there's $110,000 that has been allocated to the CDC for some infrastructure work to complement this development in this current year.
Is that funded?
It's under consideration for funding.
And the, and that says, how many units?
Um, it's 20 single-family housing units, and it, it will be mixed income, and it would be for homeownership and for rental.
And Pinehurst was, 40?
52 units at Pinehurst.
52.
And those are all rental units for seniors. And the Veranda, you all may have invitations in front of you for this groundbreaking. It's also one of the proposed, well, one of the projects that are currently, that is currently underway. There is still a gap of 1 to 1.4 million, and some of the potential funding sources would be home, and of course, our CDBG DR. The current funding, the bulk of the funding came through Lytec, Lytec dollars through SC Housing. The current funding, but the bulk of the funding came through Lytec, Lytec Dollars through SC Housing or the tax credit. So, um, let's talk a little bit about partnerships and collaborations. We can't, we can't do the work that we need to do without partnerships and collaborations. Some of the partners that we've had in the past, of course, include our nonprofit housing development corporations, SC Housing, the Columbia Housing Authority, of course HUD. And, you know, they've done a great job with providing both rental housing and housing for homeownership, multifamily, and single-family in the City of Columbia. But we need to do a lot more. I think one of the areas that we need to focus on as we continue to move forward is building additional partnerships with banks, CDFIs, and affordable housing lenders. There are partners out there who want to help us do what we need to do. You know, the city serves as a conduit. We provide gap, we provide gap funding. And I know some of my team members probably get tired of me saying that, but we're the gap. And we know we need to produce more housing, so we need those partnerships to be strengthened with our, our banks and our affordable nonprofits like the Lisk or the Federal Home Loan Banks who can help with financing affordable housing projects. So, what we, what, what, what do we do next? We propose convening a meeting with select lenders. And when I say select, select lenders, those who are really interested in assisting us with the, meeting our affordable housing goals. And those could be CDFIs, syndicators, they can be private developers, nonprofit corporations, for-profit developers. But they must have an interest in affordable housing because we know that we need that. In addition to that, we also need those private dollars that can help us also include market rate housing in our developments. You know, we've been talking about mixed income housing. I, I think it would be to our benefit as we continue to plan and move forward that we look at any of the housing that we develop in the future as being mixed income to the greatest extent possible. That's how you're going to change, help change your neighborhoods in a, in a, in a way that can make economic sense in the long haul. So, for having this meeting though, we need to make sure that we've got our stuff together. That we have a, a, a presentation so that when we do have those bankers, bankers, lenders in the room, they know what direction we're headed in and they know what our needs are. And they can go back to their respective areas and come back with, with opportunities for us to, to explore. Yes, this will be challenging, but I know that there are other municipalities and governmental entities around the country who are making it happen through a lot of creativity. I know you've heard that old adage, if you keep doing what you've always done, you're going to get what you've always gotten. So we really need to step out and think outside of the box where we can build those partnerships with others who can help us. We are now in, as I said, the first year of our two-year, um, work plan. And we have development corporations who are identifying properties to purchase. We're doing acquisition and demolition. And, um, those, those properties will need to be developed. You know, the federal dollars, they're great, but they do have strings attached. And what, those strings, some of what it includes is that when we're using our federal dollars, particularly CDBG, those projects need to be underway in three to five years. So we can't do land banking. We have to be very diligent in terms of the properties that we're actually acquiring that we have plans in the very near future to develop these, revitalize these neighborhoods. And we also need to identify what city resources will be available. And so that's where you, council, come into play in helping to identify other resources and to give us a direction and clarity on how we can make these projects work. So, I'm sorry.
Let me ask you this question. When we look at the partners, are we looking at strengthening the existing partners and the development of new partnerships within the, uh, within this whole fabric of things?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we ask, we are?
Yes, sir, that's very important. Um, we, we've already started some conversations with partners. Some of them are here in the room today. Our banking partners, raise your hands. Our CDFIs, our developers, raise your hands. Yes. Very interested.
I guess my, my point is, is, of course, we're grateful for partners. And whether or not that relationship is going to continue to strengthen itself. And of course, look at additional partners who will sort of pile on and create a kind of a expansion of what we're trying to do. So yes, okay.
Right.
Do any of these future funding sources fit squarely into some of the funding gaps we have? I mean, will they, will they move forward with Pinehurst and, or those with, with some of these funds? Or are these different projects focused?
Well, no, these, yet, to answer your question, yes, they could. And I know people get tired of hearing me say this too, but there is a process. But these funds would, would be available particularly to the CDBG funding. We already know that we have that available. We have, we have not allocated that to any project yet, but we will be doing that in the near future. What we're saying here is with our CDBG revolving loan fund, if council so desires, you know, we could propose setting aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually to assist with funding projects. To help with redevelopment.
Would that two hundred and fifty be for acquisition, demolition, and gap funding?
It could be. We will look at it on, all projects on a case-by-case basis. But yes, those are some of the criteria that we would look for in terms of considering the project funding.
Gloria, you're looking at, this would be a different pot of money. And then the CBDOs would go through application process like they currently do for other CDBG or home or funding.
Like they currently do for our NOFA.
And the CDBO would need to be, you'll have guidelines that you'll put out and will educate the development community about what they need to do ahead of time.
Yes.
To qualify.
Correct.
To get that designation. To get that designation.
Correct. And if, if there's an organization, and because we all, we, the City of Columbia's Community Development Department also funds CHODOs. That's the designation for the builders or nonprofits who apply for home dollars. So if they have a CHODO designation, they will automatically qualify as a CDBO. Because the requirements are pretty much the same. So we're proposing, should council desire, um, we usually receive anywhere between six hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars a year in revolving loan funds. But do remember that these funds, this is what we use to, to provide loans to people at a low interest rate. These are the funds we use for homeownership. So if we're going to set aside money for that, that means we're going to have less for homeownership. Not saying that that's a bad thing per se. Um, it could be that we'll do this for a certain number of years until we achieve those numbers that we need to achieve. Or, uh, you know, you do it in perpetuity, it just depends.
But the importance of the leveraging, if we, if council were to move forward with doing something like Bullet One, for example, obviously, the two hundred and fifty thousand will go, but so far. So if you've got a CDBO designated developer, the importance of these conversations with our banking partners becomes even more real because you want to then drive them hopefully to other institutions that could complement maybe what the city is doing. Is that the idea?
Yes. And, and to, to add to that, it really goes without saying the importance of planning ahead. Because we, we don't fund ideas, we fund projects. So if we're going to do this, we really need to put forth a deliberate effort in identifying projects that we can utilize the funds for. Because you know, that can be risky if you've got funds and you're not using. You know, that, that adds to some additional things that could happen.
So the projects in our targeted areas, and I know you all touched upon those on the slides Gloria, but those are some of the projects too, that have the potential to be expanded upon or finished. And those are the projects I think we need to also make sure our partners are aware of. So they understand the project, they understand if a developer comes to the table and is trying to leverage city dollars, that there might need to be gap financing.
Correct.
And that's more of what we need to do.
Right.
In terms of putting together our presentation.
And we, um, no, please.
In addition to that, um, we are also proposing that council consider whether or not we should set aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in general fund, funds as well for developers to use. And, um, I would ask, as you're thinking about that, that you consider us remaining focused on those prioritized areas that you've already selected. So if you've got federal dollars plus your general fund dollars, then that means you're going to have hopefully a mix, a mix of housing that, well, let me rephrase that, you're going to have housing that people of varying incomes can buy.
Did you skip over the three point one? Did you talk about that?
That's disaster recovery money that we have programmed. And that will go toward multifamily rental projects.
So that's-
Do we have that?
That's, that's part of the twenty-six million that we received from the federal government.
That pot is earmarked, untouchable for anything else, right?
Correct.
Which front?
The thirty-one.
Three point one. It's Ms. Gentry's turn.
Thank you all.
Extension of the twenty-six million.
So we were asked to be creative. So we have gotten creative. One of the ideas that has been tossed around for a while is, if you remember several years ago, we had a few projects that received this special source revenue tax credit. They were student housing projects that if not for that tax credit, would likely have not moved forward. One of the thoughts is capturing the taxes the city's receiving from those projects and setting those aside for an affordable housing initiative. We'd love to have the county's portion as well, that's obviously a larger conversation than we can have just in this room. There's three projects that we're already receiving that tax increase from. The other two projects are under construction, so we've identified the numbers in red of future income that could be added to that pot. And that is an annual amount once those projects come online. That's a conversation we can have now or could certainly program it in the upcoming budget discussions, which probably is the more appropriate time. But certainly want to get this on your radar to recognize the impact this can have in addition to what Gloria suggested on the previous slide.
Just a question for that, if council decides to do that, um, this would be general fund money. So say, take out the Empire and Solace Station, if we debt that one ninety annually, would that be added to that on the previous slide?
It would, it would be combined.
At the bottom, that two fifty or that two fifty?
The bottom, yeah, it would.
For market rate housing.
That's right.
We're not talking about loan money though, are we? Next page is not, it's not loan.
It is not loan. We would obviously create the criteria. If we make the decision to set this money aside, we would create whatever criteria suited it. I do want to point out Solace Station is not a student housing, but it is a project on the former CCI property that the city was involved with that property, as many of y'all probably remember.
Missy, can I answer that question that Tamika asked a minute ago? You're talking about the housing project being in addition to the two hundred and fifty or to be a funding source for the two?
It would be in addition to. And I think the real question was, would it come with the same strings that some of our CDBG dollars comes with? And that would be up to us. I mean, it would be, if it does not get set aside for affordable housing, it goes into the general fund. So it would not have the same restrictions that HUD dollars have.
But I think they're asking about, go back a slide. So the general fund revolving loan program, the third bullet. If that came from the general fund, right?
Then it also-
Then it would, that would be an additional two hundred and fifty thousand to complement the three hundred or, and or one ninety.
So you're talking, you're talking about taking five hundred thousand dollars plus out of the general fund.
This, the third bullet is already in the revolving loan program. It's not general fund that pays for general fund operations. It already exists in revolving loan. So we would divert that money from the loan program.
From previous CDBG projects that are being paid off.
That's right.
Right, and well-
All right mortgages.
If you recall too, Mr. Law, I think we had a discussion with you all about timeliness and HUD's interpretation now of with our revolving loan fund, how much of that money can be sitting there for, you know, each year that doesn't go against our timeliness requirement. And so I think the effort too, that Gloria and Missy have talked about is to, you know, keep that money moving. Um, and this would be an effort to use it in a little bit different way than what we have. Although we love our home loan program the way it is. But I do think that, just based off what we're seeing and hearing from HUD, that this would be a good way to move those funds.
I will point out, while that seems like a lot of money if you combine that two fifty with the next slide, think about the gap on the projects we've already identified. That, that is not enough to cover the gap on any one of those projects.
I think three sixty, I say, I think we, we should do as much as we possibly can. I appreciate the creative approach to it. I'd love to see that three sixty, I'm not sure if it's an annual commitment that we can lever over a period of time to maybe make bigger deals happen as they might present themselves. Um, but that three sixty, um, direct contribution, how we do it is great. I think it is leveraged that much more attractive.
And remember, in the coming year, we're talking one ninety out of, off of this slide because the two projects in red are under construction.
Do you guys still need a sense of the body from the memo submitted to council months ago on, on basically the approach? Yeah, that, that, that was, that probably got a little more into the weeds, but just the concept of using the same tool that we use for student housing, maybe put it on the table for affordable housing as well. See what type of private sector activity we can, we can generate. You know, other than foregone, half of the foregone tax revenue for ten years, we didn't put any skin in the game on those deals. And I wonder if, if we can make a four percent deal feel more like a, like a nine percent deal by basing some of the taxes for a period of time. Just again, more ways in which we can not look at necessarily capital contribution or any way. We're just, again, just kind of tickling things and letting, seeing what the private sector might, might do to help fill that, that, that need.
And similar to what we did with student housing, we would establish some criteria that projects would have to meet in order to be considered eligible. So some of the criteria may be the number of units based on the total investment. It would have a requirement that they remain affordable for a certain period of time. Income requirements, varying density. We also are looking into what we're going to refer to today as the San Antonio model. So we'll bring more information about that as well.
And most of those comments, as you're reflecting that memo, might be worth recirculating. It was based on conversations with different developers. It may have been more timely twenty-four months ago than, than now. I'd encourage more conversations with more developers to see what might look like something attractive again to get what we want. to get what we want, uh the type of development we want, not just what folks want to bring. But yeah, I think we should.
I think that concept would work well with what we discussed in the chamber, local government committee designating certain target areas and all of us giving up.
Oh no, I think he'd find uh significant interest. I mean, you know, we use a lot of that kind of industrial parks, the county had the big stick there. But uh Richland won in, probably Richland too, but I know Richland would be interested in having some high quality workforce housing, particularly you know surround, in and in and around existing um schools.
So.
I'm sorry.
Just a question, um. And you know, and and in terms of looking at different models, I I think we ought to be doing that because there's always somebody that's doing something that, you know, sparks some of what we're thinking about. But um how, what are our chances of getting um credits for what we put on the table locally to increase some of our requests from the feds? They don't consider local mats the way they used to?
It it seems, and I'm, Gloria may want to chime in as I finish. Um in our current partnership with HUD, a lot of things have changed and seems to be more restrictive and more, less linear. And i- if you could ever consider HUD linear, which you probably couldn't, but things seem to be a little more challenging. So I don't know that they're gonna look at local funding as more leverage to get more money. We can certainly ask, but it seems to be that there's less money coming from the feds, um which is part of why with the importance of our partners. And I want to talk about one other challenge we have. We, we need shovel ready projects, and one of our challenges is to get projects shovel ready. It takes money, and a lot of times our corporations are left with trying to go after the CDBG money to get it shovel ready, which then gets us into the cycle of being challenged with timeliness. We really need our partners to come forward if there's some funding they could make available to get it shovel ready, which then puts us in a better position when we do open up NOFA and try to use our CDBG dollars.
Was part of your comment, the housing corporation?
All of our own development corporations. It is really important when they apply for projects that they be shovel ready because it's so challenging. The timeframe for meeting timeliness is so tight that if they have to apply for money to get it shovel ready, they really just can't meet timeliness. And I, they're all here, they will tell you that's a ongoing struggle that we're working through.
Or if they're gonna get it to that point, then we need a private partner to take it on, to take it and and run with it at that point. If we're gonna put the money into the site development and that acquisition and.
Well, we got, well, we got a couple million dollars worth of shovel ready projects now.
Exactly, exactly.
I mean, so that's what, and and then we, the general fund doesn't come with all the strings attached as well, right? So I mean, so let's hit those. And 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 this idea was just more so around just kind of creating the environment and seeing, and seeing what 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 happens and and getting it out of the way.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, sir.
The reason I asked a question about the local mats, um I I think, well, it seems to be that, you know, the, one of the reasons the federal dollars appear to be either drying up or flowing a lot slower than it did is because I think of a perception that on the local level, folks were just asking and asking, but not necessarily doing. And with some of the numbers that we're throwing around up here now that we know we have, to me, that shows that we're putting forth an effort to, you know, at least set the foundation for for uh the feds being considerate for what we're doing with local money, as tight as local dollars are. You know? So I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking, did you have any kind of sense of how that approach would play nationally with Washington?
Yeah, I I mean, I would just say, and then I think this discussion and others that we've had is is timely. But I mean, we've got to get to the point, if, you know, what we get is is great, but we don't need to be depending on federal dollars. And we honestly don't need to be waiting for or to see what's gonna happen. Things are changing up there on a daily basis, the climate is changing.
Been going on for ten years, so we, we, we need to be focused on doing our own plan.
Right, that's what we need to, yeah, we need to just focus on what we can do. And then if we get, you know, what we get federally is fine, but, you know, keep waiting, things, projects aren't gonna get done. So I, I wouldn't say that needs to.
We get creative, we create our own destiny, period.
Well, I love, I love this, I mean, I'd be ready to vote on it today.
There, there was a period of time last year when not only City of Columbia, I think all entities were concerned whether the federal dollars were coming at all. We ended up getting funding at the same level, but it took a lot longer this cycle than it normally does. We're optimistic that that won't be the case with the cycle coming up, that we'll stay on the normal timeframe. But it certainly was um giving us a pause as to what was gonna go on federally.
Against the backdrop of of Washington DC instability and not just instability, but the, I I, I mean, we've seen support for local development, um community development go down probably every year since the Nixon administration. This is not anything new, but a brand new level of uh of challenges in in Washington right now. There'll be some additional tools on the table, and we're all, we're all talking about the Investing Opportunity Act and what that could possibly mean as well. But um I think that just underscores the importance of us being very intentional, very deliberate, very results oriented, very numbers oriented as to how many units we want to see come online and 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 X amount of time, and the things that we have to drive and we have to make sure that we're pushing internally, as well as again, the environment that we can create for the private sector to help meet those needs by incentivizing and getting the heck out of the way. I mean, I mean, we just, they said we have to be very, very, very intentional and very time sensitive. You know, the last week will show you that, I mean, um no one knows what the market's gonna look like in six months or twelve months or twenty-four months.
Tomorrow.
Tonight.
So we just gotta, we just gotta push our fast now, our fast now.
All right, that's, that's good.
Get Beltline Boulevard done too, by the way. And who, I don't know who owns it now, but it might be Melissa now, or or I don't know who has it now, but.
So was, so was that the end of the presentation?
That, that is, so that wraps it up. We will need some approval or at least um recognition of y'all's appetite to take the funding from student housing during the budget process and factor that in to upcoming budget discussions.
And what about the details on proposing our own incentive somewhat to what we did for student housing?
Well, um, I would suggest we all, my group plus Ryan and Jeff work together to come up with some criteria for y'all to look at and approve. We'll make a recommendation.
Um, and Mr. Mayor, the only thing I'll add, y'all know, I'm like a broker record, I say this all the time, but you know, if we're gonna do this, the other thing is we've got fabulous private developers who want to get things done, um but the problem in the past has been, you know, making sure that there is the requisite amount of support for them to do a project. And so this council, we need to be intricately involved in messaging it so that people understand that affordable slash workforce housing um is not just needed in this community, but the quote people, that people don't want in their communities are all of us. And we've got to make sure that the private developers come to the table and feel like Columbia wants them or else they're gonna go take their projects other places.
A wonderful example is, is the Veranda, the developer for that project. It didn't get to move forward with the project several years ago here, but he came back to the table, so. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you Gloria.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. He's asking.
Thanks all our partners too.
Gloria.
Gloria, when you get a chance.
Fred.
For the Veranda?
No, that's a, it's a different guy.
It's the same one.
I want to be there, okay? Congratulations.
I will see some rent. No. Oh, of course. Well, Howard will give him some money, don't worry.
Yeah, he's the builder, he's the builder.
Oh, okay.
The guy that blacked out of it. It's a syndicate, yeah. Yeah, we need both.
Are they?
How much they collect, they collected last year?
Two point two million.
Like I know who is who. Okay.
Oh, I know who Duane is.
Hey Doc, how you been?
I don't know. I haven't seen their application.
Thank you.
I hadn't seen their application.
Oh, he was asking.
Good, thank you sir.
No, I know Reggie, no.
You can't remember those numbers?
Oh, okay, okay. Well, that was a good one.
I found them right here.
Good. Hey, did we not invite the new?
Feel like they were just here.
Midland Housing Trust fund guy? I haven't met him yet. I don't know, yeah. Yeah, I did, I thought that. Okay.
I was, I was trying to get that here. I guess, I mean, he's still at the, wherever Midland Housing Trust Fund, I mean, whatever that number is, Jamie's still on their board, but.
Yeah, he needs to be part of the conversation.
Both these presentations, uh so.
Did everybody get a copy?
That's my fault.
Of Eric's presentation?
Um, yes, they all have it.
I think Beatty brought those, I'll give you two, okay? Yeah, thanks.
God, we had this thing down to seventy million. I, see, I can't leave y'all children alone.
See, I would have if I could afford to be out yesterday, but literally I had, I won't even go into detail. It was, it was a bad day. I had, so I hadn't eaten, I actually had some chicken soup for lunch today. It's the first time I've eaten since Sunday.
And now you feel funny after you ate.
No, so, okay, but I just feel like I need to just continue to settle my stomach.
Yeah.
Okay, so, good afternoon, council, mayor. We um are here to start um some.
Keep it down in the hall.
Thank you.
As Daniel says that, we're about to start some pretty serious discussions about um healthcare and planning for the budget. And so um. We have some information that um Eric Attwaters is here with Aon to walk us through his presentation. Um the hope is at the end that we have a little more direction on kind of some things that, at least some things you don't want to do um to move us forward on how we um deal with our OPEB and and the long-term liability. So hopefully, at the end of this discussion, we'll have um at least some direction on where we want to move forward, um have some questions answered that are very important to guide this whole discussion and to lead us in the direction that we want to go in. So Eric has some questions that he needs some answers to um that'll help direct us to our next meetings and our next presentations and kind of the direction that we take as a city. So, I'll turn it over to him and um.
Thank you, good, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I, I see the crowd stuck around for my exciting presentation. A- a- as Ms. Benjamin said, uh we're gonna talk about your retired medical plan, the OPEB, kind of do a little bit of house cleaning first, give you some background information, uh and then kind of look at what I'll call the current state, where you stand today, and then provide some options for you. There's a ton of options that you have, we'll go through those, and then walk through some pros and cons, and then kind of get through those key questions we talked about. And 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 just to back up for for a second, once we've got answers or or the direction on those key questions, I can help guide you in terms of a lot of these options, what makes the most sense. I mean, if you're gonna see it, there's a ton of options in here. But again, once we answer those key questions, that'll provide us some goals and objectives. Uh so, so with that being said, uh while we're here, I met with you, it was this September of last year, it's been that long that we initially had that initial meeting, and there were three or four things that you asked us to come back and do. One thing was to research what the impact of of funding OPEB trust would be, uh to quantify the impact if you stuck more money into the trust, and then to look at um variations on contributing the full amount of forty-eight point seven million or or derivations of that. So, so this document provides all of that analysis. Throughout the document, you'll see we kind of quantify the savings in kind of three areas for you. We say immediate savings, so what's gonna be the impact of next fiscal year? Then we kind of say what I call intermediate, which would be over the next five years, and then long term. Uh as you, as you'll see a lot of these projections, some of these items will occur immediately, but we're talking about a very long-term projection as people retire and start receiving these benefits. On, on, on page four here, just a disclosure, uh the main thing is, I am not a lawyer. Uh we don't practice law, um so, you know, any options here, you know, obviously you will need to talk to your legal counsel about the ramifications. Just a little background about your funding and budgeting process. Uh you know, currently you've got the forty-eight point seven million sent in a bank account, and and you've accumulated that money by essentially what I'll call partially pre-funding some of your benefits. Uh you, you've paid roughly seventy-five percent of the annual required contribution. Uh here we talk about the, the annual OPEB cost, I'm not gonna get into the technicalities, but you, you essentially paid most of that. And if you pay what we call the full ARC over the lifetime of the plan, you know, you fund the plan. So you haven't been funding it all the way, but you have been setting aside monies, you know, above the pay-as-you-go costs. And and that's how you've gotten to that forty-eight point seven million you have in the trust. Any, any questions? Uh so, a little bit of background, um in, in addition to, you know, you, you want to make this decision, there's also the impact of of Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Seventy-Five, or GASB Seventy-Five. So, so what does that do? That statement is going to move this liability for the OPEB plan. Right now, it's a notes disclosure in your financial statements, it's gonna move to the balance sheet. So you're looking at moving roughly from a note disclosure to about two hundred million of liability to the balance sheet with no assets. Just want to make sure that's clear. Now, we're moving this liability to the actual balance sheet. Currently, the way the liability is disclosed, it's a notes to your financial statements. It is gonna be on the balance sheet, so literally two hundred million dollars of liability is gonna go on the balance sheet in FY eighteen. Every, for everyone, everywhere. For, for here, it's gonna be two hundred million, other people it's probably a billion, it's a big number, but everyone is gonna have to put this number on their balance sheet. Unless you have some other type of assets to go on, I mean, you know, that's. Um, any, any other questions around that? So the rest of these, there's some terms that are changing with this standard changes. The term ARC, you know, annual required contribution, is replaced by actual determined contribution. So you'll kind of hear me use those simultaneously, don't worry about it, they mean the same thing. Uh but, but this statement, the, the main thing about this statement is really gonna put this on a balance sheet. So, you know, that's gonna be a significant change from where we are today.
Is, is the pension liability already on the balance sheet, or is it a note?
Yes, yes.
It is, so it's in the enterprise fund and it shows directly in there. It doesn't look as bad because when it's combined with all the assets of a water sewer system, that it, you don't notice it as much, but in the general fund, governmental, it's just in our long-term debt, so it doesn't reflect the annual operation, but it is out there on our statements, put in on that. And so this will.
Uh, any, any other questions before we get on to the current state?
No.
Okay?
So what, Jeff, so that two hundred million showing up, what's that gonna mean? What's that gonna look like?
Well, it'll be split between arcades, water and sewers, or anyone that has employees, it'll be spread out. It'll be just like we did the pensions. Again, it will reflect, it'll be an item out there. In water and sewer, it'll probably be one of the larger numbers, probably, so that it will decrease the value of our asset. Not decrease value, we have liability, so the bottom net one is going to be adjusted by the amount from the balance sheet. On the general fund, it doesn't necessarily affect the fund balance uh because we will record it with our long-term debt, which is where we have all of our costs. But it will still be out there, and we'll highlight when Bud comes next month to talk about audit and all. That would be one of the items to talk about.
It's gonna be crushing to some places.
It is, I mean, literally, when we were going through a pension, uh you know, we talked to the government account. It is, I mean, literally, when we were going through a pension, you know, we talked to the Government Accounting Standards Board and said, you know, can these entities afford to put this on the books? Because essentially, this liability is supposed to be recognized anyways, the ratings look at you. And, you know, obviously, we were unsuccessful, and, you know, once pension went into effect, we knew retired medical was going to be right behind it, so, yeah. And just to pat yourselves on the back a little bit, the two hundred million liability you have is a lot lower than a lot of places you're going to see.
Still not good enough.
It may be not good enough, but it's a lot lower because of the DBV. So with that being said, let's just get into where you are now. So, your current structure for your retired medical is, you give everyone a flat dollar, a flat payment for their retired medical benefits. Call that the DDB, and that's supposed to be flat forever, right? Now, last fiscal year, you did not maintain that amount. You had to increase it so the retirees' premium wouldn't go up so much. So you actually did not hold a DDB line last year. Okay? What I'm going to show you here is, what if you continued that practice? What if every year you said, hey, you know, retirees, we can't have you have this premium increase, so we're just going to have to, we're going to take on the cost? If you continue to do that, your liability is going to double, at least, at a minimum. I'm showing you here the four percent increase, that is at the low end of ultimate medical inflation. So it's likely that that number will be increasing higher, I wanted to show you four just to be conservative. As you can see, your liability goes from roughly a hundred and ninety million to three hundred and ninety million. So we talked about two hundred million being on the books, if the practice you continued last year continues, the number's going to be almost four hundred million. And as actuaries, we are required to value the substantive plan. Your plan says, we're going to play this fat dollar amount. What the substantive plan does is, what are you actually doing? What you're actually doing is, you're not maintaining that, you didn't last year, you're not maintaining that flat dollar amount. So that's kind of our first big decision point. How committed are you to maintaining that? Because that's going to dictate what these other options are going to, what they're going to look like, and how far you're going to have to go. So I just want to show you graphically the cash flow. So, again, I've shown you this before, the dark green are your current retirees, you know, and again, they essentially get off their payroll, and then lighter green are your current active employees, and then that older green is kind of the future high. If you look over the next twenty, twenty-five years, future hires would have no impact on cash, right? Because they've got to get to retirement and start drawing a benefit. So it's mostly your current retirees and your current active employees.
Well, that's true, but not true, because at the end of the day, they will have an impact because of everything that goes to get to that point, so.
There will be other areas where you'll be paying for them, but in terms of retiring.
Everybody impacts this if we don't make a change.
And so, we're showing you here the pure cash outlay. I want to show you what if you continue your current practices and not maintain that DDB. As you can look at it, I mean, these numbers are going to get about three times as high. So instead of having this level pattern, now that you've got this deeply increasing pattern, which is what we see for the most part with a lot of other public entities. So I want to go on to page eleven and show you what the liability looks like. So I just showed you the cash flows, this is liability. So with liability, as future hires come in, they have more impact on the liability, right? Because we know they got to receive the cash into the future, but as they come in, we start valuing the liability for them. So as you see, if you maintain the DDB, you're looking at a very kind of almost level liability, right? I mean, you know, the current retirees are going to leave, and then they'll be replaced by the future hires. But on page twelve, again, if you do not maintain that DDB, you're going to be looking at a billion-dollar liability in about thirty years. Let me say that one more time. If you do not maintain the DDB, your liability is going to be about five times as high in about thirty years. You can see.
You never need to say in the front or end of this thing what DDB stands for and stands for.
Yeah, I'm still trying. Say it again. Defined dollar benefit. So what you've actually have been doing is not a defined dollar benefit, it's an increasing dollar benefit. And again, if that practice continues, we're looking at a liability, again, jumping from two hundred million, we'll call it, to almost four hundred million immediately, and continuing to increase. So, now that we've seen all this, so what are your options? Any questions, just maybe?
Well, I'm sorry, before we go on, because I was just asking the city manager, because I didn't recall us actually affirmatively deciding not to deal with the DDB last year, and so she just pointed out to me that basically our deciding not to make a decision last year led to us doing that. So, I just kind of wanted to point that out, that we've got to have this discussion and have to make some decisions, because I wasn't aware that.
The world's still moving, the world's still moving, whether we act or not.
Yeah, right.
But it's the, it's the, I think the rub was the premium amount. At least that's what you all communicated to me.
Was it retirees, what was it?
Retirees.
Retirees. It was precipitously high, what was it, what was the number? Which was up how much percent, which was up, I mean, skyrocketed.
Yeah, it was like.
But it was based off maintaining that DDB, so that's, you know, I mean, that was the rub. I mean, either you were going to maintain it, and that's what you had to do to maintain it, just by the numbers, or we find another approach.
So remember with the DDB, we have a set amount that we're given, eight hundred dollars for retiree, and then six fifty for company spouse. So the concept is, anything over that, then we would increase the retiree's premiums to take up the difference from what the DDB paid. So that's why those figures look so high, because it was about a three million dollar difference between the DDB and the claims dollars. And there's only about seven hundred and sixty-eight retiree. So when you divide three million and seven hundred and something for retiree, you get a huge difference. They're about a forty-five percent increase in their fund.
Their claims.
Yeah, they're, what, four percent of our population, but thirty-something percent of our cost? About, or eleven percent of our population? It's eleven percent, but it's like thirty-something percent of our cost.
Well, we have them carved out, their claims experience is carved out, so their premiums are based on just their claims experience, which is also, I mean, which adds to that piece. So their claims experience alone is what impacted their premiums.
And I think, as the presentation continues, Eric will show you some options that, you know, maybe it'll make one option over another, I mean, nothing will do to make everybody happy, obviously. But we heard you that just going with the increased premiums wasn't palatable at the time, anyway.
Well, in one full swoop.
Right.
In fairness, I think where we've got to target is a three-year plan to get us to where we want to be, because you just can't do a sweep. I think there's some, there's some options on the table, on both sides of the fence, that might be palatable.
I'm glad we are having this part of the discussion, because we too thought maybe it wasn't connecting for y'all what led to this.
I'm sorry, just one more question, so Missy, are their claims, do they mirror pretty much the rest of our current claims, or what, so what are?
Compared to what claims, but their claims were, their claims were not about nine million, but retirees plus their dependent, which includes houses and children, so they have no claim. So it's about nine million, about seven hundred people, whereas the stuff, four hundred, four thousand. Fortunately, they are, I mean, their claims are larger than active employees.
But we know kind of where.
Expect, because they're, they're older and they're.
But they have the same claim.
More medical care, but they do have the same plan, because that was the decision you made, just to let the post-sixty-five have the same plan as the active. So maybe the decision is that they have a different plan, you know, that's one thing that you all may want to consider, them having a different plan, and it will be different, provide different benefits.
Let's get in the options, y'all.
Okay. All right, so let's jump into options. So, I broke it down, options for you, and I've looked at the classes of employees. Probably the easiest class to look at and make changes to are people who aren't here yet, the future hires. The problem with the easy button is that it doesn't save you a bunch of money, right, immediately. But, what it allows you to do is to go ahead and make some decisions and say, what does our future plan look like? And I'll just give you some statistics from, the Center for State and Local Government conducts an annual survey of roughly three hundred entities. They do it every June, and I'll give you some statistics from the last June. But healthcare, roughly forty percent of those are shifting more cost to employees. I mean, obviously, you're already there with the DDB, every year that more cost is going to be shipped to employees. About five percent are starting to pre-fund or have considered it, and I think I told you this before. And you've got roughly three percent who have increased in eligibility, but also on the flip side, if you look at the pension benefits, we're looking at probably about twenty percent of local plans who are increasing eligibility and our age requirements for future hires. There are some legal requirements for current employees, a lot of times with pension, but for future hires, a lot of them are making them wait longer and making them pay more for those benefits. And now I'm going to bring it back to the future hire slide here, so.
So the twenty percent represents new hires?
The.
Say it one more time, sorry. The twenty percent.
The twenty percent is for the new hires, yes, sir. For current employees, it's three percent, and that's mainly because in some states like Georgia where I live, you can't do anything to current employees unless you want to have a lawsuit. So, it depends on some of the state law, but for future hires, you know, they're not subject to that law. Did I answer your question, sir? Okay. So I showed you a longer list of options here, the first at the top being, you know, the most, what I call the most draconian, which is, what if we just eliminate coverage altogether? You know, we'll provide you access, and we're not going to pay a dime toward it. You know, again, I said, you see the immediate impact for none of these is zero, because none of these people are here. But if you look over the long period, I look at thirty years, you can see, you're talking about roughly thirty million dollars of savings. And remember, I told you your liability somewhere around, you know, a hundred, let's call it two hundred million? So, you know, this is thirty million dollars here on the long haul that you could save if you just totally eliminated the coverage. Well, you said, well, okay, Eric, well, we may not want to eliminate it altogether, a lot of plans are just eliminating the post-sixty-five portion. So what if you did that, and that's the next item below? You can see, that's roughly half of the pre-sixty-five, and I'm focused on the far-right column, just because the first two, there's not a ton of savings there. Eliminate spousal coverage, I mean, I know that even in my plan, as an active employee, I have a spousal surcharge, and a lot of retired plans are starting to eliminate that for spousal coverage or have a surcharge. And again, if you look at that, that's roughly, let's call it ten million dollars you'll save with a long haul. And then the two items, the next two items are the things I talked about, which is making it harder to get the benefit, increasing the years or age requirements. Those dollars aren't as big, if you look at them by themselves, but they still do make a dent, you know, in the long-term projection. And then we go all the way down toward the bottom, items that have a little less impact, well, what if you just lowered the DDB for those future hires? You know, just say, look, you're going to pay more, we know you're going to pay more, we're going to give you a different DDB. You can see that, you know, that's about ten percent of the savings from totally eliminating the plan. So these are all changes for future hires, people aren't here today. You know, again, I've told you some of the trends that we're seeing with those.
Does that factor into our long-term, like, share of liability?
So.
Is that, is that, is that that number on the right?
On the far right, yes, sir, that's the number on the far right.
But immediate, there's no.
Yeah, we really know, yeah, just, because it's going to take a while for we get those employees in.
But it caps, it sets an expectation for it caps off right from the get-go, so then you don't have employees that are starting to expect it.
Right.
So you get the long, so you get the long-term benefit on future hires only. If you eliminate pre and post-sixty-five, or it's on future hires only, that's all future hires, okay.
Yeah.
Post-sixty-five, you get fifteen, was it fourteen, fifteen million?
Yeah, right.
And that's just future hires?
Correct, this is only future hires, and, you know, and this, when I showed you that liability, you see those future hire liabilities start coming in over the period. So this looks at that period and says, you know, what does that impact?
No, I don't, I'm trying to get.
Okay. Any other questions to come in about the future hires, anything on the slide?
Let's keep on trucking.
Okay. So now, let's get a little bit harder.
The work session, I just wanted to make sure.
What about employees who've been hired over the last, I chose two thousand nine because that's when you make some changes? So what about employees who've been hired over the last eight years? As you can see, the immediate impact, there's some impact on some of these employees, because the way we kept some of the numbers. But again, I'm going to focus on the long-term impact, and we can talk about it short-term in a minute. But you can see, these numbers are a lot bigger because this is a group that's here today, or most of them. I mean, you've got certain employees who were hired before two thousand nine, but this is a decent amount of liability. Now, these numbers would directly lower the number I told you about, the two hundred million. So for instance, I told you the number is two hundred million, assuming you maintain the DDB. If you said, okay, anyone hired up to two thousand nine, we're not going to offer you coverage, that two hundred million goes to roughly a hundred and fifty immediately. Because those people are actually here in seats in the day, and we will value that liability for them. Now, there are other issues with that, but I just want to show you, these have more of immediate impact, because these are actually bodies who are actually in the seats.
This in two thousand nine, that was, you just picked two thousand.
I think you made some significant plan changes in two thousand nine.
You did, I didn't know if that was.
So that's what I, I just picked, I wanted a group of newer hires who, you know, who have been here about five years or so.
Okay.
Yeah. And the other part is, you know, if this were pension, sometimes we'll look at if they're vested or not, so I just looked at around that five-year mark, to see if you make changes to them. You know, and again, items down below, just like they did for the future hires, don't have a ton of impact. But if you did increase, you know, the eligibility and age requirement, you still, you know, you still could save off roughly fifteen million dollars. So you could still offer a benefit to those current active employees, but say, look, you got to wait two more years to get there, you got to have a certain age, you could shave off, you know, roughly fifteen million dollars.
You may have referenced on an earlier slide, if we're looking at two hundred million dollars long-term liability, what's our, our, I guess, our annual required contribution? What are we talking about, setting aside?
Yeah.
Ten million, sorry. That ten million is, stay steady, I think you said.
Yeah, say relatively.
Let's say ten currently, but that number increased. And it's all assuming we maintained the DDB, which we did not back in.
Okay, if we maintain, okay, we'll keep going.
We're good, no. Okay. So now, I go and say, what if you did this for all active employees who are here? Again, we've got a group of employees who are closer to retirement, so, you know, there would be some other issues with this, but I just want to show you the magnitude of this. So, again, if you want to totally eliminate it, you could cut your liability almost in half. But if you looked at eliminating the post-sixty-five, you know, that's roughly thirty million dollars. Or you could make those same employees wait a little longer, and then we're looking at somewhere around a twenty million, twenty-five million dollar range.
Cut that liability in half, does it also cut our ARC in there?
Yeah, give or take, yes, not exactly in half, but just about.
Would that not, would that not be kind of the first column of our effect next year?
Yeah, so this would be the impact of, if you did this next year, this would kind of be, right, the impact on your.
Over thirty years, it's worth three million dollars a year.
Yeah.
You only get your big impact in the first year, and then after that, it drops to about three million a year.
And these are savings on the liability, not the ARC.
Correct, the immediate role is kind of the savings on the ARC, those other two are kind of on the liability, because it's a little long-term, so it's a little mix and match. Any questions on sixteen? So now, we get to the current retirees. So, for the current retirees, you only look at three options here, I mean, it's either, you know, you eliminate your post-sixty-five, because you've already got employees who are pre-sixty-five receiving benefits, you eliminate the spousal coverage, or you lower the DDB amount. And again, I'm going to focus on the far-right hand side, you can see, if you eliminate the post-sixty-five coverage for them, you know, that's roughly twenty-eight million dollars. But if you eliminate the spousal coverage, you can save about half of that, we'll call that roughly twelve or thirteen million. And of course, lowering the DDB, now this goes directly against the conversation we just had, where you can actually increase the DDB last year, and now I'm saying, if you lower it at ten percent, what would be the impact? I wanted to show you this number, but just know that you're going from, you've been increasing the DDB, now if you say, cut it, they just know that, you know, you're likely to probably have retirees make sure that they let you know they have issues with that.
Eric, do you have any statistics on how many plans offer spousal coverage?
I do, I don't have it in my back pocket, but I can get that to you, I can get it to you for our clients at Aon and globally.
Right. It would be a minimum. It would be a minimum amount, do you think?
I will say that for active employees now, we've moved away from offering spouses. For retirees, that's the one I'm afraid, it's going to be a mixed bag. If you ask me for active employees, I would feel like three and four maybe, and that may maybe be high, but for retirees, it's probably, I would say maybe one in three, and I'm just guessing right now, and I'll get you the real number.
I was working with these OPEB plans when it came out with the Gatsby forty-five, and what we found was that it was the post-sixty-five that was the big kicker.
Right.
If you could either set a defined dollar benefit and stick to it, post-sixty-five, or if you eliminated post-sixty-five, that's where you saved your money. That's where the city of Charleston, the city of Greenville, city of Rock Hill, all the big cities in South Carolina have done. They eliminated the post-sixty-five, they eliminated family and spousal coverage, and they have reasonable contributions.
We have maintained the DDB for the post-sixty-five.
Yes.
They are maintaining, that cost for us is level at one point five, has been since we implemented that in two thousand and nine.
Because we give the retiree, the post-sixty-five, it's a Medicare supplement through United Healthcare, so they pay the premiums to them, so. It's a different, it's a lower DDB for that group?
I admit, I'm, I'm, I'm not an expert on benefits. So when you, when we say you eliminate, that means we don't pay, we don't, we don't set it up, but we, what, we tie them into an alternate provider?
Well, it depends on whether they're pre-sixty-five or post-sixty-five. I think most of the cities, when they made the change, continued to have access, pre-sixty-five, but post-sixty-five, they completely eliminated them. I know the city of Charleston worked with, it might have been United, to set up the availability of a supplemental plan that is paid by the employees, it's just.
It's cheaper.
Not paid by the city.
It's cheaper for the employee to get the supplemental plan on their own than through us.
Yes, and the city of Charleston only facilitated that, they don't pay for it.
Yeah.
But our, a lot of our retiree, our post-sixty-five retirees are tended to separate and not take the city's supplement in fear that they won't get a better plan or they can't get a better plan.
So they're on our full health plan?
No, they're on our, they're on our supplemental plan.
But it costs about a hundred dollars, lots more per person.
The premiums that they pay for that UHC plan is most likely a lot higher than what they could get on their own.
Yeah.
And they'll, you're saying most of them don't know that, and also. They're hesitant to do it.
They know it, they don't trust it.
I, I don't, you know. I'm where I was when I was with the state. I don't, I don't know the pain, I don't know if I would, would have been better off on my own or staying with the state, the state don't provide that option for you.
All right, buyouts.
Okay. So let's talk about buyouts. So just one thing about the buyout. I'm going to use the term actual present value, APV, that's the liability we send, we hold for each participant to come up with their two hundred million dollars. The only way to save on the buyout is to offer them less than that value. You know, we say it's a thousand dollars a person, you offer them seven, eight hundred dollars, you save money.
Value of the liability.
Right, value of the liability. Now, that's based on average life expectancy.
If we consider the Gatsby.
No, no, go ahead, sir.
No, no, you go.
And that's based on average life expectancy and all these things, so some people are going to live longer, some are going to live shorter, we get all that. We're saying on average, the only way to save money is to offer them less than the liability. So.
Using the term saving money, the reality is, is you're prepaying and allowing them to take that funding and do what they want to do with it and go out in the marketplace, which right now is better for them than it is in an overall.
The reason why I say you do save is because in that two hundred million of liability, we would assume they get that, that DDB forever until they die. So in this case, we're going to give them a fixed dollar amount, so that's a direct saving, you know.
Well, they can invest it how they want.
Correct, they can do whatever they want to, they can go buy a boat with it.
And this council or a future council could end the DDB.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, and I'll just say that because of this, you know, if you look at a buyout option, I think you probably want to look at the end of offering retiree medical benefits. And the reason why I say that is that you're going to have all kinds of classes of employees, and so you buy one group and another group comes later. It just sends a signal to employees, in my mind, that we're kind of out of retiree business. You know, we're going to offer you this benefit, future hires, you know, we'll continue to honor that, but it kind of signals that for future hires, we're kind of no longer offering these benefits.
Well, and it's probably, I mean, that's become the norm unfortunately across the thing, is that you're not guaranteed long-term benefits anymore.
Right.
Most people aren't, people are moving around more anyway. Longevity with an employer is not.
It's not what it used to be.
Right.
Say that one more time now, you're saying that if we decide to do the buyout, we need to end retiree coverage?
I was saying that, in my mind, if you decide to do the buyout for future hires, it signals to me that you're kind of out of the retiree medical business. If anyone going forward, you know, we're not offering this benefit anymore. We're going to pay out these people that we owe, pay them out of a promise, and the future hires will get their promise. But anyone else, we're kind of out of that business, and I'll tell you why that signals that to me. Let's say we get fifteen years down the road, right?
I think it's important to say we don't owe, we may feel this obligation.
Right.
Okay. And we feel that we, that we ought to help.
Exactly, and my fear is that you get fifteen years down the road, we bought out this group today. And then they either show up and say, hey, you know, you really shortchanged me and I didn't fully understand everything, and, you know, Pam's over there getting her retirement benefit, and she's saying, well, wait a minute, Eric. You know, so I'm just saying, you've got all these different groups you've got to consider, but that's why I said, if you're going to do it, you probably want to just say, for future hires, we're out of that business. Now, you honor the promises you've made, but I don't know if you want to continue to offer that going forward. And now, this buyout, and I'll tell you that, I can think of three cases where this has been done. Missouri is doing this on a pension plan, we've had a client in California do it with their OPEB plan, we've got one in Louisiana who's doing it with pension. This is a very new phenomenon in the public sector altogether, you know, and so we're starting to see a little more traction around this. But this phenomenon of offering people less than actual present value, we can only offer it in the public sector. So private sector would never, they couldn't do this, the rules would prohibit them. But as a public plan, you're totally allowed. Again, the state of Missouri, and I'll send you the information on them, they're going to it right now, so.
So private sector, they.
Private sector could just cut it off.
I was trying to make it clear, they just cut it off.
Yeah, they just cut it off.
No longer offering, okay.
Right, and when the pension private sector can say, we're going to freeze it going forward, you don't do anything else, but they can't take what you've earned. But they can't, they can't just cash you out and say, we're going to give you eighty percent of your actual present value. There are rules against that.
What'd you pay for the spouse, though?
Onto this, to this page, so on this far-left column, I show you what I call the discount from actual present value. How much less than the actual present value we're going to give them? So, you know, I showed you ten, twenty-five, fifty percent. Going across to the right, I show you how many participants are actually going to take it. So the twenty-five percent take rate is, let's assume that, you know, we offer it a twenty-five percent discount, so we offer people seventy-five cents on the dollar. And if we get twenty-five percent to take it, you can see we'll save anywhere, you know, let's just call it seven billion dollars.
How does this factor in, Mr. Rick just asked me too, how does this factor in spouses, an obligation to spouses?
This would be, everyone you've got a liability for, so it would be that, if I've got me and my spouse on the coverage, we would both get some payment.
And I recognize there's different views around the table, but I think there's some views that, that if there isn't an obligation, obligations to the employee, retiree, not to the spouse. I know that you're, and that's why I said there's different views around the table. So, okay, but in terms of the math, the buyout should apply to the retiree.
Retiree.
But the benefit of lowering that liability should be calculated accordingly, that's just.
But you'd let a spouse buy out without getting the employee to buy out?
No. You're not, your obligation is not to the spouse, it's to the retiree.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add something. If we're going to do buyouts, we really need to consider it's all or none. If we offer it, you're going to have a certain employee that's.
If we would make that decision, it would be an all or nothing thing, there is no option.
That's what I'm saying, and depending on how you want to do the buyout, it's a.
But did you guys just say the same thing? Did you guys just say the same thing? You're talking, you're talking about employees and retirees, you're talking about all retirees. It makes you all saying the same thing.
No, that's not what we're saying, we're saying that you can't offer some people to buy out and some people stay on, it's either all or nothing.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and here we are, Wayne looking at your retirees.
Retirees, he's more retirees right there, that's math.
So let me just repeat what I think I heard, is that, what the council's saying is that the obligation is to the retirees and you would buy them out, but for the spouse, you're not so sure you would actually buy them out, is that, did I pay for?
Well, the spouse wasn't part of, wasn't an employee.
No, he's saying, though, that if they were on the plan.
Yeah, they're on the plan now.
Of the, of the retiree, the retiree might be carrying the spouse and/or the spouse and dependents, right?
Right.
So if you buy them out, it applies to everybody they were carrying.
Well, that's if you don't change the plan ahead of time.
That's where I was going with, yeah.
I mean, that's, you know, one of the things that keeps coming up in every presentation we've gotten is the.
The fact that they're still on.
That we need to look at the spousal and we need to look at the retiree, who, if they're working for somebody else and has the opportunity to get health care there, they should be getting it there, not from us. Because of exactly what we're looking at, this long-term liability.
So your, your suggestion, Mr. Rick, and as, because I know you mentioned earlier, like a three-year approach. I'm not knowing what you'll do, but there's the possibility that you would do that first, changing the plan, and then move into another year where you would go to the buyout potentially.
Yeah, I mean, you look at thirty years, but in thirty years, the projection showed it could be a billion dollars. All right, so just think about that, in thirty years, what it would take us to get there, and we got fifty million in the bank.
Right.
I mean, I don't have to get the calculator out.
But the discussion of changing the plan first is to sort of soften it.
Well, I think that's what we've said, is that we fundamentally have to look at the plans and figure out what those changes and where we want to move, and then we can make a decision on this. But one of the falters in what happened before is, is we never were able to get to the table from all the different things that were happening to talk about, well, yeah, that piece of paper said eight hundred dollars or whatever that number was that was thrown around. But we never had the opportunity to sit down and go, well, we're looking at making the changes over a period of time so it's less impactful. Because we can't continue to go, you can't continue to treat your post-sixty-five retirees as active employees. You just, it's, it's, it's not fiscally responsible, number one, and it's fiscally or financially. Right. So, I mean, I think for us, knowing this and knowing this, and then looking at how we may possibly make changes to the plan, because the one thing we want to do is make sure that we're providing a stable, healthy plan for the active employees that are here today. How we address post-sixty-five and pre-sixty-five future and liabilities, we'll have to build after we're able to look at that, but we need to be looking at it together so that as we move forward, we know how that, that could be, and, you know, you could have, we're going to do buyouts over a three-year period, maybe, I don't know. It's something to look at because what I keep hearing from a lot of the retirees is, they can go get a supplemental plan that is much more efficient, what they're worried about is the funding. So if you give them account, now, if they blow their money, that's their decision, but if you're buying them out and they've got a health account, then they can, they can figure it out, they're going to end up saving money.
But it's the blowing their account that scares me.
But, but you know, but you're adults, we're not a nanny state, we can't supply crying rooms and pillows for everybody.
You have fifty firemen sitting over here that took their money and bought a boat in Lake Murray, then you're not going, this council will cave to them every time. And they will go out and spend the money, and then they will get into financial trouble and they're going to have to bail them out.
But Howard, if you make that a decision, you're a grown adult, and you decide that a boat is better than health care? You can't hold it by his hand.
If we, if we, if we, at some point.
Bring my gavel down here.
If we, if we, but look, if we at some point decide that's what we're going to go, it also comes with education.
Indeed. Hey, let's get back to the math, okay? We're talking about policies and stuff.
Again, the rest of this table just shows you the portion of people that are taken and then the various discounts. So I just want to clarify one thing to the council, the question about breaking out the spouses out of this number, I would have to go back and look at it, but is that of interest to you guys to see if we didn't include the spouses?
We don't know, we just, the conversation really comes down to if you did something, you know.
What if?
Our obligation is not to the spouses, it's to the employee, and that's the way we need to be focused.
Okay, so going on to page twenty, so what I did want to show you is how much money the average retiree would get on the various cases. Your average pre-sixty-five is about fifty-eight, your average post-sixty-five employee is roughly seventy-four years old. If you just think about, they're going to get paid over their lifetime, and of course, the one who's fifty-eight has a much longer life expectancy. So if you look at the pre-sixty-five retirees, you offer a ten percent discount, you pay these people roughly, roughly a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
You guys see, his fingers twiddling over his foot tapping?
You just forgot how many boats he get by?
Just balance sheet, he's, 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 he's over there twitching and everything, I apologize. Go ahead, please.
No, no.
Keep an eye on him.
Okay.
Hey, we do have a defibrillator.
So did I go down the chart to just showing you, but this came up last time, you know, if you look at the post-sixty-five, their amounts are much smaller. We're talking about paying them somewhere, you know, in the thirty thousand dollar range. And this is the average employee, right, we understand it, it was based on each individual's age. And one thing I do want to articulate on the buyout, the devil's in a lot of the details here, because as you go through this, someone mentioned education. That's going to be really in key that, one, that we prepare them and we drive them toward whether the plan you want them to go toward. And then you're going to probably have to do either some statements or something, maybe one-on-one counseling, just to help employees, at least advise them. So, you know, maybe some of your savings you spend on that stuff, but I just wanted to make you aware of it, that, you know, because of the issue we talked about. Okay? So let's talk about free funding, any other questions on buyout before we go into pre-funding? Okay, so now we're talking about pre-funding, I think I told you that, you know, roughly five percent of the plans, you know, said they were looking to start pre-funding. And I'll say that in addition to the roughly five percent of sort of our pre-funding. So still, a lot of plans are pre-funding this retiree medical benefit, but under the new Gatsby standards, there is some tangible benefits to doing that. You have a lower liability, in fact, if you were to pre-fund, and I'm not getting numbers here, your liability will be roughly forty million dollars lower because of the way the rules are going to work under this new standard.
What does that do to the?
What does it do to the ARC? Forty million dollars, fifteen, it's going to lower ARC maybe two.
A million?
Yeah, a couple million dollars. Yeah, if you put the whole thing in and then start pre-funding, it's the two point eight. So the two point eight I'm showing here, you get two benefits here, one, you get the, you get the benefit of using a lower liability because of the way the standards work, and then your ARC is reduced because you've got now forty-eight million sitting into the trust. So that two point eight is kind of like two pieces you get the benefit of.
Obviously, spending it has a much different effect than putting the trust in your balance sheet, Jeff, so what does that, what does that mean to your ratings agencies and others? Okay, all right, all right.
So I'm going to skip the next page, and we just show you that some of you put half the money in, and we'll go on to talk about the impact on the credit rating. And I'm going to go right here to talk about how the credit rating agencies kind of look at pension and OPEB obligations together. And they count, you know, the debt and liability profile roughly twenty percent, you know, they're looking at the entity. So if you just think about that from a perspective of. If you think about that twenty percent from a perspective of, you know, how much impact it's going to have, you know, eighty percent, they're looking at these other things. But they do look at the debt and entity impact the credit rating. And the other thing they look at too is kind of, they look at the current state, where you are today, and then they also look at where you're going in the future state. We show here adjusted net pension obligation, but that's pension or OPEB. We show here adjusted net pension obligation, but that's, that's pension or OPEB. Moody's actually makes some adjustments to what you put on your financial statements to get to a point of what they're saying the liability is. So the liabilities that Moody's will have you at for OPEB will be different than anywhere you'll see, because they, they, they make up their own. Well, I don't say they make up their own, they use their own methodology to come up with that liability. Uh, now, S and P, who's your other agency, they, they use the rates that are in the CAFRA.
How, how, how are their projections showing pretty much on?
They're very similar.
On target one day.
Yeah, they're pretty, I'll just go back to this page. If you, you look at, kind of look at how they kind of look at this, and if I would, I know you don't, I read it by Fitch. Fitch has a lot different methodology, but you're not rated by them, but if you look at it, the debt and liability is about the twenty percent component, economy's about twenty, but then they start differing on the financial management, and then kind of the governance portion. You can see that Moody's kind of has a bigger bucket for those two pieces versus S and P doesn't. Answer the question? So, so just to summarize what impact this has on the credit rating, and I'll let Jeff also comment. We also talked to your financial advisor, and he pointed out some things, you know, in your last statement that the rating agency did talk about, you know, some of the flexibility having this clash, it was at least, uh, it was Moody's that, that talked about this, and I'm going to skip, it's on page thirty-nine. We have it in here in the back. Yeah. Uh, and I'll, you know, the bow bomb down at the bottom, but you see Moody's talks about, you know, the fact that the funds are highly liquid and not in the trust, you know, they saw this as a strength, and, and this is directly from, from your last, uh, the two thousand eight, two thousand sixteen, sorry, financial statements. So, to summarize that.
So how, so how, so how does that weigh?
Yeah, so.
Where the seesaw, where does the seesaw land? Does it level us out? I, I, I mean, having fifty million in cash is, that'd be pretty attractive, having that liability.
Cash is a strength of the city. When you look at the sixteen and, and a lot of our other rating agencies, when they talk, they always talk about our profile and what you're strong in, they always list weaknesses and strength. Strength for us has always been the amount of cash, so if we lower that, that's not going to be a credit positive, that's going to affect.
Yeah, but it's got to balance out the net.
You're right, it doesn't mean it's going to lower, because they're going to take a look at what you've done long-term, but Brent has talked with them extensively on it, and there's no guarantee of anything. Just that lowering cash isn't going to help, but having a financial policy that's sustainable long-term is a positive. So it, it comes down to, you know, when they go to their board, not board, their, whatever their committee or group meeting is, those are the type of conversations that the individual analyst for the state will have with their board that makes the final decision. So when we go and talk to them, if we choose to do this, we will really, during our rating calls, talk about how we have improved something sustainable long-term, and that's a long-term good for us. So those are, there's just no way to know, though.
Sure.
What the outpa-, impact is. Part of it's good, part of it isn't.
And all of the scenarios presented us in the previous slides suggest exhausting the entire forty-eight million?
So i- i- in the previous slide for the buyout, I, I kind of showed you a range. You said, you know, what if you took half of it, what if you took the whole forty-eight million?
Okay, okay, got you.
Those big numbers.
I thought that was takedown, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, I got to show the take rate, and I think in this case, we'll assume that you took that whole forty-eight point seven million and actually used it for a buyout on page, page nineteen.
I agree, I agree.
You know?
I agree.
So, so I did just want to add a little color around, you know, if you did the buyout and used some of the cash, you know, you are taking away some of that liquidity, but if you did a buyout and, and you, you know, you offer people fifty percent of the value, you know, I would think that that would be a net positive, because, you know, you're offering them so much less than the liability.
Sure.
Okay, so now we talked about options, rating agencies, so now let's get into the hard stuff of kind of making a decision and some key questions and key considerations. Before we go there, I just talk about a few of the pros and cons, and some of these you've already talked on. You know, we talked about changing the plan or changing eligibility, you know, it reduces the unfunded liability and future cash flow, like I showed you. It doesn't have any impact on, on morale if you do it for future hires, but if you do those changes for current employees, you understand it's going to impact morale. You know, that, that's just a known fact, right? If you, even if you make them wait an extra two or three years, there are going to be some employees who are, you know, it's going to affect some of their morale. You got a question, sir?
Just, but three years, four years, though, that gives you time to plan.
Right.
Help them, one, digest it, and two, come up with a, with their plan to, to, you know, come off.
Yep. Yeah, if you kind of phase it in and let them know, hey, you got this runway coming, we're going to make these changes, it does give them time to kind of maneuver, at least most of your employees who aren't close to retirement. Uh, you know, some of the negatives, we haven't talked about litigation at all in any of these items. Again, I'm not a lawyer, but you know, if you get into the buyout, you know, you're going to have to have some serious legal advice. I'll just tell you my experience, I don't think you can mandate that buyout. I'm not a lawyer again, but my experience of dealing with these type of situations where you offer people less than the value, you have to make it optional. There's a way to design a program.
So you can, so you can end it, you can end it.
Exactly, but, but, but I'm just saying you have to be careful about the choice of words we use.
Yeah.
Because of the whole litigation issue. So you can say, hey, you take this or get nothing, you can do it that way, but you can't say everybody's got to take it. You know, I'm just saying, the devil's in the details, you, you've got to, you've kind of got to make it optional.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Let's, let's, let's muscle through this, y'all.
Okay, so, so I'm, I'm going to skip the pros and cons so we can keep moving.
Sure.
So, so let's get into the meat of it. You know, what we need to kind of answer and what we need to define so that we can get to a point of looking at, you know, some packages. The first, the biggest thing is the DDB level. You know, I mean, how committed, you know, are you to maintaining that DDB level? Because if you continue to increase that DDB level, yes, that's less come out retirees' pockets, but then that means that other groups, we got to touch more to, to make this all work financially. You don't have that billion-dollar liability out there in the future. I mean, that, that, that to me is the very first decision point, is are we going to maintain the DDB, am I comfortable maintaining that, or are we going to have this increase in DDB? Because again, like I said, that dictates, you know, how many other changes have to be. Affordability and sustainability, you know, we've talked about the nine million dollars that you're paying now, and, you know, we know long-term, you know, you don't want to pay thirty-five million of cash, but then what is the, you know, what, what do you see as affordability and sustainability? Seven million, six million?
Well, it's, it's, that's an irrelevant conversation, because if you look at the long-term outcast of what it will cost us, that number doesn't even come close to getting us where we need to be.
Well, I disagree to say this is irrelevant, I think it's extremely relevant in terms of, you've got to know how much I can afford to design a plan that meets those objectives.
Well, I mean, we can afford zero to be truthful, but that's, that's not a reality either. And so my point is, is you've given us the numbers of where we're headed and where we go, now we got to figure out what we can do.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's the reality of it. I mean, you know, what is, what is our long-term outlook, and are we willing to continue on the path that we are, where we know there's no end in sight? Or do we look at alternatives and what those are? We may have to be creative, you know, like you said, the buyout was only a few people. Well, they got creative, they got out of the box, and they figured out how to address their situation. Ours may be a, a, a multiple of things, but I think the information you provided us is very helpful for us to get that conversation going.
And, and, and these questions are, they're for you, but they're also for me, because if you say, hey, Eric, I want to pay five or six million dollars, I can then go back and say, okay, put these package options together.
Get back, you get back into something.
Yeah, but, but if you just say, hey, you know, it's, I have to have some direction in terms, you want me to say, here's a package of options you should be considering. Otherwise, I give you that information and, you know, you can go and, and make that decision.
Sure.
Okay. And, and then the, the last item, you know, something along the line is who's going to be impacted to what degree? You know, again, we've got to impact certain groups to make this all work, and, you know, I talked about the DDB level, but, you know, do we want to, you know, is one group, um, you know, hands-off, and another group is more. I mean, like I said, we talked about changing the future hires because they're not here, but how about some changes to current retirees? How much of an increase can they afford next year? Those are all things that we've got to think about, you know, again, to make this all work long-term. Okay? And on the next few pages, we, we just got additional questions related to the eligibility to buy out, just some things that you need to consider. For the sake of time, I'm happy to go through them, or we can, we can kind of pause there and, and take some questions. You know, the big thing with the eligibility and plan design is, you know, who's going to be impacted what degree? I kind of, those options I showed you earlier, I categorized those in what I call pebble, rock, and boulder. I mean, and, and then I just kind of grouped this in terms of what's the impact on the cost? And so if you look at the current retirees, if you wanted to say, well, you know, we, we want a hot rock, you know, you could look at either lowering the DDB, eliminating spousal coverage. And if you want something that's even more significant, then you could look at eliminating the post-sixty-five or the pre and post-sixty-five. I'll kind of break those down for you, we can kind of get a feel for, you know, is this a pebble, is this a rock or a boulder? And I understand that anything with current retirees is all boulders, right? Because they're going to show up here in the woodwork, but just in terms of categorizing it for your financial impact. On page thirty, um, more questions around the buyout, and, and we had some of this discussion around, you know, are we worried about affordability and people, I live in their money, and we worried about them spending the money elsewhere? And, and these are just some questions, and then some ideas to kind of guide you as you think about those.
These are incredibly responsible adults, but I disagree with some of the comments earlier. We're talking about grown folks who know how to make their own decisions.
And, and then on, on the prefunding, again, you know, some of the same questions that we talked about with Jeff is, you know, how much a desire to short-term flexibility versus long-term, and then, you know, just thinking about the administrative complexity of actually establishing a trust. So, so now that I've laid out a bunch of options to you, we talked about the current state, so what's next? What's next is, you know, we want to refine those goals and objectives, you know, the best we can, so that I can try to help you as best I can in terms of those questions I ask. Once we get answers to those, then I can come up and say, I could package all those options I showed you into two or three wild called packages. So it may be A, B, or C saying, okay, you told me you want to do these three or four things, give three packages to get you there. I mean, in, in our world, you know, there's more than one way to get to a certain number. You know, they all have repercussions, but that will be the next stage once we get that, and then it'll just get down to making a recommendation. Once I have the goals and objectives, lay out the options, I'm more than willing to say, you know, of these options, based on what you told me, here's what fits you the best.
Sure, absolutely.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that you didn't discuss in your presentation here is the investing in a trust, and you're saying you're assuming that the trust is earning four point five percent.
Yes, sir.
Do you think that's doable in South Carolina with the restrictions on local government investment?
I, so, so in South Carolina, you can only invest in fixed income, in my understanding, and. If you look at the state, and I, and I got this from the state, the state is assuming like five or something for their investment in trust.
They, they invest in that.
They're losing money, don't they?
No, 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 no. No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying whether or not they're making good investments, all I was just saying was that the state, who's the governing body, is saying that we think long-term we could get five percent in the fixed income market, so, so we think four and a half is fine and reasonable.
The state can invest in equity.
They, they can in, in OPEB?
Yes.
Pension, pension, pension they can.
Yeah, I think, I think OPEB, I think is only bond for, for fixed income for the retirement.
I don't know about OPEB, I don't know about OPEBs and pensions, they can, they changed that law in twenty, two thousand and six, I guess.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you guys the report, I, I, I looked at their report.
If fixed income, I mean, I think you, I think nationwide might have been about two, two, two point high twos or.
Well, I mean, you know, well, we're standing right here today, right? Lowering environment, fixed income looks really bad, but over the thirty-year range, I mean, I, I, I think you, you probably could, depending on, look at something around at four, four and a half, over the thirty years. And what, what I will do, I, I'll send you the state report, so you can see what they're doing, and I'll also send you our capital market assumptions for fixed income, so you can see, you know, I, I'm thinking plain vanilla fixed income is lower, but depending on what you can invest in, you could get up to that four and a half.
Teresa, Eric, thank you so much, very helpful. It's enough to say grace over. Steps forward, given some of the, uh, uh, timeframes we, we, we're probably looking mid-spring before we make some final decisions, I, I would, I would think unless you're going to do something sooner than that.
We were hoping for something sooner than that. I know that Mr. Rickman, who, I don't know if he wants to chime in on this, but he had asked, I think in one of your previous work sessions, for some recommendations, um, for this topic, and Eric has done a great job of that. I know I gave you a hard time as we were getting prepared for this, Eric, but you did a great job.
Prepared me well.
You did a great job.
He did a great job, but, um, as far as plan design changes, um, moving into looking at some of the other options that we've talked about, we were hoping for the next work session, so February twentieth, to present those things. I don't know if we're still on that timeline, Mr. Rickman.
We're, we're about two weeks behind.
Okay.
But we will have solid options.
So how about two, how about two things? We got to work through some scheduling.
Sure.
Issues. If we're going to do something work session next summer, unless there's some time sensitive issues, we probably just need to do this.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we, we need to, we need to drill down into these numbers and the policy considerations. We also need to have structured and productive, uh, uh, as possible, a discussion with our employees or retirees. Obviously, representing the, um, the current employees with our retirees, there's, there's a conversation to be had there, that, that I think that we, we just need to kind of lay all this information out in as informative a way as possible, and just have a dialogue as representative of, of, of all the realities we're dealing with, um, short-term and long-term, and the opportunities, the possibilities. But that, but that needs to be an informed discussion that we, we have yet had an opportunity to have, at least recently.
Sure.
Mr. Davis?
Just a question, now, is there a leadership body of, of the retirees? Or do we sit in a room with a large group at one?
No, 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 no. I think we can pull, I think we pull, we've had some, we've had some retirees who've been very helpful and instructive in discussion, I think we, we pull them in, we can figure that out. Anybody who wants to misbehave can't be allowed in.
Right.
Mr. Rickman, are you doing, are you doing the OPEB discussion, or are you doing health plan and OPEB?
Health plan.
Well, if you're doing health plan, I've asked for several years now to get the state comparison.
For the health plan?
We got, we got to get an executive session, y'all.
Yeah, I'd be glad to, to do that. Yeah, I'd be glad to, to do that. Um, I'll go ahead and tell you that there are a lot of things in the state plan that are not beneficial for us or the employees. Because they, they have eliminated a lot of the testing, a lot of the drugs, things that we provide our employees today that make our system healthier. So we gotta weigh all that out, but yeah, we've looked at it before.
I'd like the number.
It's not about a number. It's gotta, it's gotta be a quality, it's a balance of both, it's not just, because if it was just about a number, we could do a lot of things.
It's gotta be a good plan, it's gotta be a good plan, for our folks, keep our people healthy.
Mr. Mayor, just so I'm clear, for the twentieth, and Mr. Rickman, are you all wanting to bring any of the health care discussion back? Or do you want to dive deeper into this discussion?
That won't be ready yet, so let's dive deeper into this.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, and have a representative group at the table of the retirees?
No, we need to do the search, we need to do the self, ourselves first.
Okay, alright.
Okay? Alright. Let's, let's keep this work to keep the endeavor to keep the schedule clear. Alright? We got, we got some folks.
Other thing I would, I would just add, though, for, for the discussion, and I think Eric pointed it out a couple of times. You know, we focus a lot on the retirees, and they're the ones who come and say, don't take this, don't take that. But, you know, our current employees, we've got it, we've got to consider what impact it has on them, and, you know, we can't do stuff for the sake of not ticking off our retirees. At the detriment to our current employees, people who are working now, so.
I think, I think right now, we're talking about financial considerations, not necessarily that quality of, I think.
But I was just talking.
That's what quality of the plan.
Throw that out as part of changes and understanding. And the reason we had the affordable housing that they told us, trying to get kind of your big broad, and then you're, like with that too, you'll need some further recommendations to come back on that, so.
Very helpful.
Next.
Let me get a motion. Let me get a motion. When the executive session.
So move.
Alright, okay.
Take, take, read it, read it.
And Mr. DeVall?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to move to executive session for a discussion of employer, employment of an employee pursuant to seventy-eight-two. Receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to seventy-eight-two, including sidewalk vending ordinance, railroad referendum, extended hour permit for commercial establishments.
And security measures, sir. Add security measures to that.
And security measures.
Thank you.
On number four. Uh, number five is a legal advice related to pending threat or potential claims pursuant to seventy-eight-two. Cumberland, um, versus City of Columbia, discussion of negotiation ends to proposed contractual arrangement pursuant to seventy-eight-two. Park affairs, um, fire services agreement, Lockhart, Bull Street Development, discussions related to proposed location or extension of services. To encourage the location or expansion of industries or other businesses pursuant to seventy-eight-two, rain, living, and project weather.
Aye.
Right there.
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McNaul?
Yes.
Mr. DeVall?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor?